Do what?
I'll start here, then you there, then I'll do the science.
Do what?
There.
On the thirteenth day of February twenty twenty five, appreciate everyone being here, board members, and also the members of the public work session as we go through, we're gonna cover the items that will be coming forward in our consent agenda. And again, if there is, as we go through these, these items, and there's quite a few, and we'll touch on all of them as we prepare for six o'clock. But the, if there's something on that that you think needs to be pulled out for discussion, deliberation, then we'll pull that out. I'll ask Mr. D to stick that in the electronic version, in, on the electronic version that you're looking at, under new business, and so we'll take that up in that part of our agenda. So we'll, we'll start going through the, the consent agenda, agenda items, and just make sure that we're, we're all, all good on what's, what's been covered there. First, we had work session minutes from January, our January ninth meeting, and that also included our board meeting minutes in that, did not include our board meeting minutes in that. So we'll look at the, look at the work session minutes and see if there's anything on that that we need to... So I guess one, the thing that I'm pulling out of this is that work session minutes, I'm pretty sure that those are our regular board meeting minutes. So can we just change the title on that and change that file because it, that is, the items in that are our, the items that we covered in our regular board meeting.
Mr. Chairman, the, the meeting minutes and the, from the, the meeting minutes and the work session meetings are, those examples are actually in the folder, it's just not listed separately on the consent agenda. It just says, "Minutes from the meeting," but that includes the work session and the board meeting minutes are the examples.
Did I miss that?
Yeah, those are both in there, and then there's also a...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. One more click back, start with six A. I apologize. So yes, we've got the minute, minute meetings, board meeting minutes for January ninth, that's six A in our folder, so if you'll let me click one, one arrow back and you'll have that. Anything on our minutes that we need to, need to note? Then next would be our work session minutes for the same January ninth meeting. Okay. Then we'll go through, we had, as you recall, we had a special call meeting on January twenty third, and that was to address and take action on the twenty twenty five Educational Savings Act and resolution that was passed during that time. Okay, no corrections, then we'll move on to budget amendments and transfers. Looks like we got some federal monies in. Let's you speak to, speak to those, I think we have three?
Yes, there were several amendments made or changes made by the federal program, so those came in and we've made alterations in, in the budget. I'll go in the order in which they are in your electronic packet. Fund one forty-two, sub fund nine fifty-one, we amended the budget to transfer unused funds out of that line item to other materials and supplies not considered equipment or service. So that's an amount of five thousand fourteen dollars and eighty-five cents, and you can see which accounts or lines were debited and credited there. The next one, it was in the amount of thirty dollars and twenty-six cents, this was an allocation reduction in the Title I program that came from the state, so we reduced one line item and credited the other. This is, sorry, one, Fund one forty-two, Sub Fund one oh-two, Title I funds in the amount of thirty dollars and twenty-six cents. Make sure I'm saying that right. Yep. And as you scroll down in that particular file, this is O six C in your packet. Fund one forty-two, Sub Fund two oh-one, we had thirty-five hundred dollars, this is an increase in revenue, increase in revenue in a, by an additional one thousand five hundred eleven dollars and ninety-seven cents per the state for the Title II program, and transfer funds from staff development into line item five ninety-nine to purchase other needed supplies. So a total of thirty-five hundred dollars, you can see the lines that are debited and credited there. Ms. Felton, is there, did they give any reasoning to these changes?
These are just the final allocations, the feds finally don't know what the exact amount of our allocations were, though we're over halfway through the year, that's the way it rolls. I was at a conference last two days and it was like that, so we're forward funded, so they just kind of estimate what they will get. And just to note on that one for Title II, those funds are transferred at thirty-five hundred, we can, we're allowed to pay tuition for hardest staff positions, so we have some spent teachers getting additional certifications or speech language pathologists, which are very hard to find, and so we're paying for some of our teachers their tuition to go back and get those hardest staff areas. So that's actually what that thirty-five hundred is for that, we've had an additional need come up that we can help, help those teachers pay tuition.
Very good.
For the degrees we need them to have in certifications.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification. The next budget amendment in the amount of ten thousand twenty-seven dollars and eight cents, Fund one forty-two, Sub Fund five oh-one, this is Title V funding. We receive revenue in a ten, in the amount of ten thousand dollars, ten thousand twenty-seven dollars and eight cents, and you can see it's broken down for services, support services and transfers out and indirect costs, so allocate it out to those lines. The next one is one forty-two, Sub Fund nine twelve, this is sped preschool, one hundred eighty-nine dollars in rev, in additional revenue, and it's gonna be moved into the educational assistance credit line. And then the last one in your packet is one forty-two, nine oh-one, this is Part B, IDEA, IDEA Part B, the amount of extra revenue in the amount of twelve thousand seven hundred forty-one dollars, and that's broken out primarily against wages and, and benefits for the sped personnel. And those, that's the extent of our budget amendments for this month.
All right. Ms. Felton, you said something, I think, I think it's important for us as board members to, to understand, and Mr. D, you may wanna just reinforce this, what I'm, what I'm about to say, or correct, not just reinforce, but you said fed funds come in and they are forward paid, which means that they're going to project an amount, they're going to fund our account for that, and then we will start drawing off those funds that are in our account at that time, that's fed, fed funds. The state is, are they different in this, in fact, that they, it's more of a reimbursement?
It's kinda like the federal money runs through the state and the state discharges it out to us.
Okay.
So this money has been funneled through the state to give out to us. The good news is we're in the positive, owing the most was thirty dollars last year, it was a lot, it was significant that they took away, but this is just their, the federal government has finally told the state, here's how much money we're giving you, and then they make adjustments.
Okay. So are the, but are, my correct, are there not some state funding that is reimbursement, where we have to fund the money and then submit for reimbursement for the state before we get our monies back?
Yeah, that's kind of what this is, we get reimbursement from the state.
Okay, so this is more of a reimbursement, so just...
There are just, there are a number of different funding mechanisms, and there, there are several grants in which we, we pay and ask for reimbursement later, and then there are, there are instances where, with the state funding as well, even through TISA funding, where we, we, we pay upfront, we get money returned back later, we have money taken away later that they have true up in, in June, they'll see where we are and true that up. We have outcome funding that we, that we receive that based after testing, we just received it the following year because they didn't have, the testing data lags a year, so it's coming and going at all various times, at, at the federal, state and level, probably the locals, probably the only that says, here's what we're gonna give you, and it's done.
Yeah, so I just think, board members, it's when we, these budget amendments come up, we just understand that so many times we're having to deal with those because of monies flowing in that need to be shifted, because once it comes in from the state, it'll go into one account, and then we're responsible for making sure it gets in the right line item, right line items.
And by this point in the year, you know, salaries are already done, you know, we need enough to hire anybody else, and some of this will be put there by forefunding to be like, what we don't use this year will carry over to next year as well, so some of this is kind of good news that we'll hopefully start the year a little ahead, but nevermind.
Wasn't that amount in the, like, the two hundred thousand range?
Last year.
Last year at this time, when we realized that that was...
It was significant what they took away from Title I, because GP had to end up taking care of a whole year of teacher salaries, and some of it was taken away just in Title I, so I was relieved that it was only thirty dollars.
That's great, so good work, work managing that. Okay. All right, so those are budget amendments and transfers. Any other questions on that? Okay. We'll move on to, next is policy, and Mr. D and I realize that policy fifteen eighteen and fifteen oh-six, those are coming up, this will be second reading on those policies, and where we change the language in those policies about the board reimbursing, reimbursing the applicants for a position if it's offered and accepted, change that from, from shall to may, so it gives, gives the board latitude there. So that'll be coming up in sec...
You said that was fifty-one eighteen, five point one one eight, and five point one oh-six?
He said fifteen.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Did I say fifteen? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Little dyslexia kicking in, fifty-one eighteen and fifty-one oh-six. I'm just seeing if y'all are paying attention, really listening, so those...
I'll start, no, Jim.
Thank you, that's the reason why you saw my left.
That's right.
So...
He's dipped out of there too.
So we have, what'd you say? So we have those two policies, and then policy forty-four oh-one, that's our textbook policy, and we review that annually. Mr. D slid that in because typically we've, we've been looking at that this time in the year, he has no recommendations for changes to this policy, he, we're just putting in that we have reviewed the policy, and because it does say that as board we'll, we'll review that on an annual basis. So no changes to that policy.
I do, I do have one question on that policy.
Absolutely.
I was just looking at the, the age of the books, I know we're, we don't, we have a lot of textbooks still, or is everything...
It depends, more so at the elementary, middle school level than the high school, but it just depends on the subject matter. Some, some classes really depend on those, others have gone to more of a, an electronic version, but even electronic versions, they sell for the same price as a hardback book because that's how they get you.
So do we ever have any, any kind of collection on anything that's damaged on the care of the textbooks?
It's rare, it's rare, our students do a pretty good job, our students and families take, do a pretty good job, and teachers do a good job of caring for our textbooks, so it's very rare that we have one that we have to recoup, but, but we, and we have some additional books, we, we don't order too much over, but we have additional ones if, if some get damaged.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. McDonald, so, so again, that's a, policy, there's, there's no policy change on that, other than the fact that we, we have reviewed that policy. So that brings next item, we've got a maintenance report included in your packet, looks like that a lot of, it seems like heating units are a big topic in the maintenance report this month, but all in all, it looks like maintenance is, is in good shape, and then keen project that's continuing to take place throughout the district. Any questions or comments regarding the maintenance report? So that would then take us down to our, we don't have any school reports this, did I overlook that?
Um, we do, did I not put that in there for you? It was not finished until earlier this week, so I will put that in there now, but we do have a report from the schools.
All right, we'll, we'll circle back around to that. We'll go to budget report, Mr. Smith.
Mm-hmm. So revenues continue rolling at a good rate, as of January thirty-first, we have received just over nine hundred thousand more in revenue than for the same period last year. Looking specifically at local taxes, we have received just shy of two hundred and fifty thousand more, this is primarily due to the local option sales tax revenue, which has increased close to ten percent from January of twenty-four. Final revenue, other local revenue is already above what was budgeted in fiscal year twenty-five, this is due to the sale of equipment and various donations received thus far during the year, which were not included in the original budget. For expenditures, salaries and benefits are up proportionally to the changes in the salary scales made for this fiscal year for twenty-five, other expenses are staying consistent with the previous year, thus far we have spent forty-nine percent of our budget versus forty-nine point four-six percent for last fiscal year. Bottom line is while expenditures have increased over the prior year, revenues are keeping up, and we still project a positive net income by the end of the fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, which that last statement was very, was very nice to hear, given the fact that we thinking, going in here that projecting a deficit, so appreciate everyone that's managing stewards of the funds to making sure that we're, we're doing a little bit better than what we projected. Any questions for Mr. Smith? Okay. So I think Ms. Douglas has a T L N report.
I do. The Education Freedom Scholarship Act, or the voucher program, has now been signed into law for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. It passed in both the House and the Senate. Representative Paul Sherrill, he voted no, and Senator Paul Bailey voted yes. Just in summary, there is an application process, the first year there's twenty thousand vouchers available at the amount of approximately seven thousand dollars. Ten thousand vouchers will go to low income, and they deem low income to be a maximum of a hundred and seventy-five thousand for a family of four. And then ten thousand vouchers are regardless of your income. Some other points to this is that homeschool students are not eligible for the vouchers, students living in the country illegally are not eligible, and possibility of students with special needs could be excluded. They are thinking that there's, that they could add five thousand more vouchers into that, the next school year, the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Of this money, the funds have to be used for tuition and fees first, other expenses are not covered, like uniforms and, and other things will not be covered through that money. There is also a one-time bonus of two thousand dollars for public school teachers, grades K through twelve, for this school year, as long as the local school board adopts a resolution affirming that we will participate in the program. There is some things to be discussed with that, because it does say K through twelve teachers. Funding for this program is from a new spending from the state's general fund and a transfer from the state lottery for education fund, which is where the public school dollars come from. Another thing is that there is a standardized testing for grades three, three through eleven in public schools, but there is a different testing for private schools, they do not, are not under our testing, our regulations, and there are some other bills dealing with education that are coming through, cell phones and some other things are being discussed, but as of now, this is what I have.
Thank you. Any questions for...
I will make one comment.
Questions, comments?
So if a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for a family of four is considered low income, I am poverty-stricken, something terrible.
Me too.
I mean, I, I don't know if I can eat tonight when I go home. Well, I can, because Ms. Ryan is taking care of my supper for tonight. Thank you, Ms. Ryan.
I've got a...
Go ahead, no.
Well, I've got a question, so when we spoke a couple weeks ago, Christian schools were exempt, they, the Christian private schools.
Not all of them, I mean, there's, there's a...
Because I haven't actually read through the...
Yeah, and I didn't find a lot of information on what is deemed to be, where it is eligible and ineligible, but there are some Christian schools that are not, some that are, so I'm not sure.
I read a little bit into that, and there's, there's five levels of, of private schools, levels one and two will not be considered, if I'm not mistaken, levels one and two will not be eligible for it, but three, four, and five will. For instance, I use the example of Boyd Christian, they're a level three, they're a level three private school, they will be eligible for the voucher program, if they so choose to, to be a part of it, so...
But I don't know what makes up a level one.
Well, you can go on to the, you go on the state website and just put in the private schools, and it'll pull up a list, and it'll have the number, their, their, their school number out beside it.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, comments for Ms. Douglas on her T L N report? Okay, we'll, we'll come back to throw assessment report, and as we gather that information, we'll put that in your, in your, in your packet. Personnel reports have data through December of twenty twenty-four, so you can see there the number applicant interviews and actual hires on that, and also included that, the personnel changes that took place in the month of January, so it gives you a list of hires, terminations, and transfers. Any comments, questions on regarding personnel? Okay. So we have, next is for field trip requests, and these are out of county overnight, the White County High School, these are all, all high school, and then J R, J R O T C, the TISA field trip coming up in July, excuse me, June through July first, Opryland, that is Ms. Colley, Ms. Mr. Mason and Ms. Mason going, taking the students to national conference in Nashville. The Interact Club is, has a planned overnight conference trip to Pigeon Forge, that'll be later this month, twenty-eighth through February through March second. You have FFA, the State Convention in Gatlinburg, that will be March twenty-third through March twenty-sixth. And then finally, the Junior ROTC going to a rifle competition in Anniston, Alabama, and that will be taking place on third through the fifth of, of April, so those are all overnight out-of-town requests approved by the board. Second, will you be attending the FFA State Convention?
Yes, sir.
Awesome, well, you will, you will represent the board well, and FFA well.
So I was noticing that it says middle school.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss that?
Is the high school, have they already submitted theirs for approval?
If I'm not mistaken, we submit ours in August.
I think we've already approved that one.
Okay. That's, this one's middle school, correct?
Yes, so we need to change that.
Yeah, Ms. Doublefield, yeah.
Okay, so my correction, middle school, FFA.
That's what we're here for.
So that's good, that'll be the people that'll be coming in and, and serving in your role when you're graduating, right?
That's the ones that look up to her around here.
That's right, the ones that you're mentoring, that's great. Any questions on those field trip requests? All right, then we've had a fundraiser request for the White County High School Boys Soccer Team wanting to participate in a Brad Durham donation fundraiser, and there was information included in your packet explaining what this is, appears to be an online program where products can be purchased and, but then also I think looks like that they can make straight contributions to the, to the program. And so this is something that the soccer team is requesting, and if you look through, through that information, you can see, and this is, is this out of McMinnville, a McMinnville based program, or is this somebody, this just has a...
Yes, Mr. Brad Durham lives in McMinnville, we, the board has approved this program for middle school, or high school soccer, yeah, high school girls soccer has used this in the past, I know Madison Evans has used this with her team, so, and had some, a lot of success, so this would be a straight fundraiser, it's, I, well, it's just, it's, they, they use the app, the students can get incentives if they get so many, so much money donated, then there are prizes, gift cards, and things that they like that they can earn, but it's a, it's a straight kind of a crowdfunding, so to speak, donations, so we won't be participating in the portion which that people can buy products and things, and I think the breakdown, I've put that in your packet, I think it's a eighty-five, eighty-five fifteen breakdown, yes. So again, it's been approved at least once by the board, and the soccer team would like to participate as well.
So this is somebody that have, have that fundraiser request.
I like the fact that these fundraisers, that you're not sending kids out begging for money.
All right, any other questions regarding this soccer fundraiser request? All right, then we'll, we're at that point in time where we'll be approving the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year calendar, so that information was, was presented in your, in your packet, and you see that teacher in service and, and teacher prep... And you see that teacher in-service and teacher prep activities taking place in that to be the last week of July. First full, full day of school in, on August first. Do have a one-week fall break period out for Christmas on the seventeenth. Another spring break period in March, March ninth through the thirteenth, and with the proposed last day of school on May twenty-second. So at the end of the day, state law, we have to have, get students in for a hundred and eighty days through the year. And so it's what, how the, how the calendar dates work out. You have teacher in-service dates, and administrative days are also noted in that. So you can explain how calendars, who, who comes up with the calendar recommendation? And then just for some of the new board members that may not know?
Yeah, very contrary to popular belief, I have very little direction in this process. I, I really, we let the teachers really work on this. The Teacher Advisory Board does a great job of working on this, and they work with our curriculum folks. Ms. Fresh and Dr. Butcher give them some parameters, and I do as well. They take this back to their colleagues in the buildings and discuss it. There are some things that we have to keep framed. There are some non-negotiables. We can't get out of school too early in May because you have to wait for T cap testing and results to come back. I know people think we keep starting earlier and earlier, we don't. But in order to get the first semester block semester of high school done before Christmas, you gotta back it up ninety days, and that pushes you back towards that August one date, which means in-service dips into July just a little bit. So we try and keep things intact as far as our fall break is Columbus Day that week. We've moved spring break to coincide with daylight saving time, which we think is a better numeric break in, in the schedule, but it's also better academically, we feel. It's, it makes more sense than coming back and having a couple of weeks before we get into some testing. So there are some, some, some non-negotiables there as far as those things are concerned that we didn't want to mess with. But beyond that, teachers really liked having a longer Christmas break. We did discuss having the whole week at Thanksgiving, which always comes up, but they, they felt like they wanted a longer Christmas break in there as well. So we really like to give them a lot of freedom to, to work with those hundred and eighty days with, with a few, like I said, non-negotiables with testing and that sort of thing. But beyond that, the teachers come up with a couple calendars to vote on, and this is the one that they presented for approval.
Okay. So already starting to think about twenty-five, twenty-six as far as the calendar, but any other questions about the calendar? Yes, sir, Ms. Smith, or Ms. Officer?
Easter Monday, is that a new break?
Yes, they, well, what has happened in the past with spring break was sometimes, I don't know, it went, last year, when it was, but Good Friday would get eaten up by, by the spring break. So they felt like they were losing a day, but they really liked the idea of having that Monday, so they gave them another four-day. You know, every day that we, so every day that you take off is a day you gotta tack on at the end. And so there were, there were, there were some of those things. Like we talked about Thanksgiving, for example, that was another one of those. You can take those days and, you know, explain, you can, you know, you can put days wherever you want. You're just gonna go longer, spread it out. So that was one that they felt like, we gave them another four-day weekend with Good Friday, was, would be a good break in April.
I think it's a good idea because a lot of people travel, and with it being Easter Sunday, they have Monday to get home.
We, and then this, sometimes sports, you know, like in spring sports, you know, soccer, for example, we have games, you know, just for them, we have to play games, and sometimes you gotta take them when you get them. So we're actually gonna be playing during spring break. So this would give them another little break. If families wanted to get away, we could make that happen. So, so that, those, those are some considerations as well.
Mr. Chairman, just a question. The high school parent-teacher conference is in September, but the middle school is in October. I'm assuming that's by choice and not because we can't do two in one month? Is there some rule?
No, there's no rule to that. Those, those came by request, and it has to do with just, you know, high school's a little bit different in the sense that they change classes at the break. And so if you got into October, you're halfway through a whole class course with this. So they wanted to do those a little bit earlier. There was a lot of conversations too about when do we have open house? You know, the high school does a whole orientation, which is an open house, and then they've come back the first week of school and do open house, and there was nothing really to talk about because we just saw. So we worked through those things because they're, they're different levels of those, those events look a little bit different. But that was the timing of the, the nature of the programming at the high schools looks a little different, so they wanted to have their parent-teacher conference a little earlier.
Makes sense, thank you.
Okay.
Also, I would say, sorry, we, we stagger those as well because if, if parents have students in multiple levels, they can't get to every school in one night and see teachers.
Yeah, and that's where you'd see on, in October, middle school on the twenty-first, pre-K through fifth on the twenty, twenty-third, so, yeah. So it looks like some good, good thought went into this, this calendar. So, so we would be approving, approving the calendar as part of consent agenda tonight. So, and that brings to the, the last item in your packet. As Ms. Douglas mentioned, that boards have to, in order for teachers to be, receive the bonus for the, from the Education Act, Education Freedom Act, board has stopped a resolution saying that we will participate in, in the Section Four of the, of the law. So, which would result in a bonus for teachers. So that resolution is in, in your packet. So pause here, do you have any questions or comments on, on that particular item?
I'd, I'd like to just entertain a change in the first where I statement. If this is the time to do that, Mr. Chair, I'll be happy to do that, or we can just pull it out and put it into the.
So I'm gonna suggest that if you want to make some changes to the resolution, let's, let's pull it out. We'll put it in item eleven B, new business, and so then that way we can properly deliberate that and not be taking action in our committee.
Sounds good.
So, so that will be, we'll pull that out, board members, and that will follow in new business items. So we'll, we'll have that discussion when we get to that point of our agenda.
So I've got some.
Yes, ma'am.
So she mentioned, Ms. Douglas mentioned K through twelve? Is this for K through twelve only? What about our pre-K teachers?
Yes, it, right now, there'll be, there'll be a rule setting that will go on to the state board about how this will actually come to pass, but the way I understand it, it's just for K through twelve. So it's not, doesn't include pre-K. And the word, the verbiage I'm hearing right now is it's only for teachers, licensed certified teachers who have students in front of them fifty percent of the day. So any teachers that, it would include all of our counselors, some of our librarians that don't have course, and all of our instructional coaches, certainly administrators, principals, it would include them. So it's gonna leave a lot of people out. So that will leave the board with some options of, you know, either we, not everybody would receive that bonus, or the board would have to look at paying that locally out of a lot of funds. That's, you know, and it doesn't include any staff, of which we have about three hundred. So, so that's, that would be some considerations that our board would have to consider.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, that concludes our consent agenda items for, for tonight.
Don't forget the school report.
No, school.
Yeah, school report. It is in there at this time, I apologize for that. There were, there were some changes being made to that earlier this week, and I guess maybe out-of-town is my excuse. But I, I have put that in there now, so you do have school report in there. I've received a message, Mr. Bumbolo is working on getting me the threat assessment report. If I get that, I will let, notify you that it's there and any, any that we're monitoring. But he's working on sending that here in the next few minutes, and we'll have that for you as well. You can handle that however. But there is a school report in there at this time, and I apologize for that not being in there when we crossed that agenda.
Uh, it's not a problem. So everybody refresh their screen, and yes, school report, six F. So just touch base on this, we got a little time.
I'll be glad to read it to you.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely, go ahead.
Body-cuffed teachers and students working daily to grow and learn. Recently had team data meetings where teachers analyzed student data and made planning adjustments to ensure they're meeting students' needs. They're setting goals and working hard to ensure that they meet them. At Cassville, the Bs have been working hard to prepare for a standalone field test on T cap. They're proud of their teachers and students for all their hard work in the classroom. Go Bs! At Doyle, we're planning, having a standalone field test on Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, which was yesterday. Teachers are working hard to get our students ready for T cap in April. We had data team meetings last week, they analyzed current data and made adjustments accordingly. Here at Finley, they're back in school regularly. Teachers and students are continuing to work hard, ensure that, that they are growing and learning daily. After taking reading standalone field tests this week, we'll begin preparing for T cap in April. Proud of our students who demonstrate, demonstrate our rise expectations. Falcons rise with respect, integrity, safety, and excellence. At Northfield, big shout-out to the amazing teachers and staff at the Northfield Elementary. They've been working super hard to get their kids ready for T cap in April, and it shows. They're making sure that all staff, all important things are covered and giving extra help where it is needed. Witham Park is preparing, again, also for the standalone field test in grades two through five. Recognize twenty students who show respect on a daily basis as part of their Panther promise, and they're also implementing the I-ready test to make sure that they are helping students to reach their levels. White County Middle Schools, they're gearing up for the standalone field test as well, with teachers and students rigorously preparing every day. We also look forward to welcoming parents into their building for parent-teacher conferences. That's tonight. All this week, they have had dress-up days leading up to their PS I love you day on Friday. Additionally, we are piloting a Warrior Times on Fridays dedicated to supporting every student's needs. Congratulations to the basketball teams, cheerleaders for their appearances in the sectionals of the T M S A A tournament. It's great to be a White County Middle School Warrior. And last but not least, White County High School staff has had a great start to the new semester. Their students are successfully, have successfully completed, competed in their science fair and displayed their great talents. Our parent-teacher conferences are this week, this week went very well, went well as well. This week, the basketball homecoming week, both boys and girls teams are preparing for their upcoming district tournament. Spring sports are gearing up for their start, and the Roy Sewell Gym Nation was voted the best T S S double A basketball gym in the Nashville area. Go Warriors!
Congratulations to high school. That's great. All right. So then that would conclude our, our items on, on our consent agenda and reports. So thanks for everyone for your participation, and so we'll adjourn till six o'clock. Thank you.
I've called the February 13th meeting of White County Board of Education to order. If you would, please rise, and Ms. Officer is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Officers. Thank you for everyone being here tonight. Like to welcome all those that are here and are attendance joining us online. We appreciate your interest in the business of White County School District and appreciate your support. Thanks to Ms. Ryan and her staff for hosting us tonight. It's always nice to get out and see our schools and be in your space for a while and just see all the good things that are taking place here. So again, appreciate you being here tonight. Tennessee Code Annotated Board Policy 1400 state that every meeting of the school board is open to the public except where law allows closed session. The agenda for board meetings are posted on the district's website at www-whitecoastschools.net at least three days prior to each meeting. Each meeting agenda by law includes an item reserved for public comment. The sign-up sheet is made available prior to the beginning of the regular meeting. Individuals who signed up prior to the start of the meeting to speak will be recognized in the order listed on the sign-up sheet at the point in the agenda designated for public comment. Board meetings are streamed with the help of Warrior Media for live or recorded viewing. Links are provided on the district's website. Attending and/or speaking during tonight's meeting applies consent for comments and appearances to be used. So with that, again, like to start our meeting off tonight. We have a fairly light agenda tonight, and we'll be going through that shortly, reviewing the approving our agenda, and then getting into the items that we have on the docket tonight. But this time, we'll go, before we go any further, I'd like to, board members, if there's any conflicts of interest on the proposed agenda that's being considered tonight, ask you, please let that be known at this time.
Mr. Chairman, as I do each and every month, just for the record, there is no item on the agenda tonight that I feel is in a conflict of interest with me, but my wife is a educator in this system, and just wanted known that the comments that you hear from me tonight will be for the best interests of this district and the students that we serve.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Mr. Chairman, my spouse is also employed by the district, but the opinions and outlooks tonight are my own.
Thank you, Ms. Officer.
Mr. Chairman, my spouse is also employed in the high school, and comments and opinion are mine. I don't know.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Smith Sims, if you would, just please let the minutes reflect that Mr. McDonald, Ms. Officer, and Mr. Smith all acknowledge that they do have spouses working within our district, but nothing in the agenda tonight is being proposed would constitute a conflict for them. So with that being said, next item is approval for the agenda for tonight's meeting. Board members, you've had a chance to review this agenda, so if this time we'll entertain a motion for approval. Motion by Mr. Smith to have a second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Fowler, any discussion?
Just some noted that the item for the education freedom sample resolution for the teacher bonuses will be moved into the new business section under 11B.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. So item 6Q, be moved from consent agenda and be placed as a new business item in 11B. So motion and a second. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I want to make sure that the board is aware of 11A, that the approval of the snow day recuperation plan, I'm not sure if that was in the original version that you saw, so that item has been added for new business consideration tonight, just to make sure the board is aware of that before they approve the agenda.
Okay. That's a new business item that may have not been made the original draft, but we'll point that up in new business. Okay, anything else on our agenda? Okay, if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The consent agenda tonight consists of approval of our minutes held on January 9th and also our special call meeting on January 23rd. There were budget amendments and transfers that were discussed regarding new funding that's come in from federal programs. Amendment to policy 5106 is up for second reading, and also, if somebody could help me on that.
5118.
5118 also coming up for second reading, approval of second reading for those two policies. We did review our textbook policy, and no changes were recommended by the directors. We do that annually. We had the maintenance report, school report, budget report, which the district and county seem to be in good shape financially per the report and moving in the right direction there. And then we had our TLN report, monthly threat assessment report. That information has been put in your electronic packet. There are no outstanding items on that report, so everything has been cleared and found as no threat. The personnel report approved field trips for the White County High School, TESA field trip, Interact Club, middle school FFA, junior RTC, fundraiser for the boys soccer team, approved the school calendar for the 2025-2026 school calendar year that was as recommended by the teacher advisory group. And then, so those are items are part of our consent agenda. So since we did pull out the one item, 6Q, and be discussing that in new business, no items have been, that was only modification to our consent agenda, so as a consent item, we won't need a motion or a second. So all those in favor of approval of the consent, let it know by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item on our agenda, we'd like to recognize Ms. Rebecca Ryan, principal here at Finley Elementary. So Ms. Ryan.
Thank you. Well, I do want to welcome you all to Finley Elementary tonight on behalf of Mr. Hicks, our assistant principal myself. We appreciate you all so much and everything that you do to support us. We love our students and our faculty and staff. They're very proud of our school. We were a reward school last year, so very proud of that, continue to, you know, make sure that we are pushing all of our students. We are very proud of the diversity that we have here at Finley. We currently have 417 students enrolled. We house one conference of development class that has 17 students. We also have all, the majority of our ESL students in White County. that has seventeen students. We also have all, the majority of our ESL students in White County here at Finley, so very proud of that diversity and hoping that we can continue to make sure all students are successful no matter what their background or abilities are. So at this time, we want to recognize some of our faculty and staff for their contributions to our school's health. I know the, our motto this year is Health Heroes, and so I wanted to recognize some of the ladies that, and gentlemen that work here that help keep our school healthy. So we're going to start with our cafeteria staff. So I don't know, do you want me to present or do we all present those?
Absolutely. I'd be happy to.
So we have six ladies that work in our cafeteria, so they're charged with feeding, like I said, over four hundred students every day, breakfast, lunch. They're always decorating the cafeteria, the serving line, just really trying to make sure that the kids are enjoying when they're coming to the lunch line and enjoying coming through there and getting their lunch and encouraging kids to eat our school lunch. It's always great to see them. They're always so happy and just always on our kids' side. So we'll start with Ms. Carleen Smith. She's our cafeteria manager. And our assistant cafeteria manager is Ms. Aggie Palmer. We also have Ms. Alexis Hutto. Ms. Deborah Matts. Ms. Abigail Fredmore. And Ms. Ann Sullivan. Can you picture those ladies?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's fine. Yep. She's in there a little bit though. I'm sorry. Yeah. Thank you. And then next, I wanted to recognize our school nurse, Ms. Rhonda Stoglin. And Nurse Rhonda, full-time here, four hundred and seventeen students, takes care of all of those. Bumps, bruises, broken bones. We have a few diabetic students, so just always busy.
And one diabetic teacher.
And one teacher, yes. One teacher we have taken care of. And then our other two are custodians. They're not, Ms. Rena, she works the early morning shift, so she's not with us and then Mr. Cody's down working, so they're not with us, but they, we have, right now, we have two full-time custodians and they have their hands full keeping this building clean. It's a beautiful, large school that we're very proud of, and so they keep it clean. We always, anytime we have visitors, guests, we always have a lot of compliments about how nice and clean our facilities are, so we're very proud of that. So again, thank you all for being here tonight. We appreciate you. And if there's ever anything that we can do, Mr. Hicks and myself, please let us know. We'll be happy to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to talk about?
I can. So it's not been publicized yet. I don't think we're allowed to, you know, put anything out on social media, but we received an email a few weeks ago that the state of Tennessee is able to nominate six schools across the state, that's private and public schools, to the National Blue Ribbon Schools Program. And so I'm very proud that we were one of those nominations from Tennessee this year, so we have an application process to go through. We were selected because our achievement scores in English, in English and math, were in the top fifteen percent in the state. And so we're very proud of that, of our state's achievements. So we will be applying for that program and then we'll find out something in the fall. A little more information that'll be publicized if we are able to make it through the application process and get that finalized. So very proud of that.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan, and appreciate all the good work that goes on here at, at Finley. Next item on our agenda is district update and Mr. Tom Barker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Personnel reports in your folders. We continue to look for good, best driving candidates and we're already publicizing for teaching positions that we know we will need for next year. This week, I spent a few days in Nashville at the TSBA and TOS conferences. It was a great time with lawyers, legislators, state education leaders, and the president of the TSBA, the Honorable Mr. Jason McDonald, to discuss the current state of legislative issues pertaining to education. The vouchers have passed and we'll see what the aftermath will be. Our focus now is many other important pieces of legislation will be going through the General Assembly, including recess time, TWSA transfer rules, and cell phones are some of the hotbed items. Academically, we continue to celebrate our academic scores. Tonight, we're proud to be sitting in this school as Ms. Ryan mentioned, as being recognized nationally as a Blue Ribbon School candidate. This is a critical time academically as we push towards the spring testing season. Safety-wise, lock projects continue at several of our schools and search safety team meetings continue monthly. Our parent square communication tool continues to serve us well. We're discussing with our sheriff's department about partnering with Warrior Media to produce some public service announcements in order to reduce the number of issues that we're having with vaping and with false reports of threats. Financially, as you heard, the financial report, we're on track with our expenditures and we're confident that this trend will continue. Athletics, basketball is quickly approaching the district tournament and spring sports practices have officially begun. Building projects, we met recently with leadership from TCAT Upper Cumberland about the possibility of renovating a space at our high school to create an innovative programming, some innovative program, excuse me, at White County High School. TCAT has access to funding that could be braided with some of our Innovative School Models grant funds to offer some very exciting opportunities for our students and our communities. Some more to come on that. Upcoming break, schools will be closed this coming Monday for President's Day and students will be out of school on Tuesday as well due to a teacher in-service day. Yes, I'm aware there's snow in the forecast for Wednesday and we will see what happens there. So this completes the director's report and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. D. Any questions, comments to our director for our director's report? Okay. All right. Ms. Sackett, Ms. McGill, any questions? All right. Comments? Thank you. Board members, this afternoon, I put something in your packet I wanted you to have and that's copy of the director performance evaluation. We're not, this is not the season for director's evaluation, but that will be coming up. So two things, I wanted to make sure that you had those, okay, and you could start looking at that. Then also had a conversation with Mr. D about having filled these out. We've had discussions over this about, about potentially revamping that evaluation. I did ask him to look at those questions and ask him to do very similar what he does with the administrators throughout the district when he does their reviews and that is to give him an opportunity to provide evidence. So now that we see the, the evaluation metrics that, that we're going to be rating him on, that he in turn supports us by going through and putting some examples in for you to look at when that time comes. So rather not wait till the week of that we're trying to do this and say, hey, would you please provide us with some evidence? Let's go on and start preparing now. And so that'll give him some time and space toward that end. So then when we get into that season, then I think we'll, we'll be able to have good discussion and you'll be able to do a thorough job in your responsibility of doing the evaluation. So I wanted to just bring that up if you had any comments, but it was more informational than anything. Comments?
So the deadline to submit our evaluation is?
That will be, that will be coming. That will be, that will be coming. There'll be a notice sent out when we get to that. I think that's in April and we bring that up in May meeting. I have to go back and look. But Ms. Rust will send that out to your accounts and then you do that and then we'll make sure that you have proper notice of where Mr. D's information supporting evidence will be in that.
Okay, wait a minute. Just one second.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I printed it off, but last year, did we not talk about changing this some?
We did. We did. We talked about changing it. We haven't got to that yet. So that's why we said, let's have him provide some evidence to support that, that evaluation.
What's here?
Correct.
Okay. And then we're going to look at changing it again.
When we get into that, when we get into that, we'll, we can have some, after, this board has had the opportunity to go through this, then we can look at if we want to.
That's probably a junior, a juvenile.
That would, correct. Correct. Okay. All right. You're welcome. I just want to try to keep everybody informed. All right. So next, I'd like to recognize Ms. Sackett and Ms. McGill for our student representative report. Ladies?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we actually have a pretty big student report this month, but we're happy about that because that means there's a lot of good going on. So within the FFA, a lot of students who exemplify great skills within their SAE are given the opportunity to fill out a proficiency. So basically what this is, is it's an application. So an SAE is a supervised agriculture experience and that's something that its student in FFA is required to have to be a part of the program. These are operations that for some are very vigorous and for some are very simple. But for those who demonstrates very, like, excellent skills and knowledge within that agriculture experience, they're able to fill out an application to be recognized at the state level and some at just the regional level, but that still in itself is a very big accomplishment. So we had twelve fill out a proficiency and this application is by no means easy at all. I filled one out last year and I didn't this year if that tells you anything. These are applications that take a lot of hard work and we had tons, all of them who filled one out placed in the top six. So that's really awesome and we'd like to recognize those students. So first place in swine production placement was Marlo Selby. First place in swine production entrepreneurship was Reese Selby. First place in agri-science research integrated systems was Ms. Katie Eller. First place in wildlife management Camden Ryan. And all of these first placed students will represent White County FFA at the state level on stage and hopefully be awarded the state winner. So. Second place in equine entrepreneurship was Laney Kennard. Third place in agriculture education Hunter Rigsby. Third place in turf grass management Logan Holman. Fourth place in specialty animals Amberlyn Simmons. Fourth in forage production Landon Kerr. Sixth in poultry production Brianna Powell and also sixth in sheep production Brianna Powell. And Brianna is so awesome. She's so cool. And she actually is a first-generation farmer with a super duper awesome SAE that she has going for herself. She's like quite the businesswoman. And it's actually funny. She raises chickens and sells eggs and she's allergic to them. So I just think that that's like something funny. But she did apply to also be a star farmer, which is another very vigorous process. Her application was like this thick by the time she was done. So she put a lot of hard work into that and was first runner-up in the middle Tennessee region. So that's pretty awesome.
All right. Let's see here. Next, we have the warriors of the month that the high school does. Let's see, we have Madison Blaylock, Icias Campbell, Zoe Clemens, Michael Colson, Trevor Herr, Alexis Jones, Anna Maples, and Louise Urzy.
Yep. We're excited for them. And then like Mr. D said, we did have a school science fair. Then I got to walk through it and it was actually super awesome. So we do have all the winners up to top three in each category as well as the overall winners and some of these students will go on to compete in the Upper Cumberland Science and Engineering Fair at Tennessee Tech in April. So in animal and plant studies, we have first Olivia Hart, second Hunter Rigsby, and third Mallory Riddle. In chemical science, first Jackson Birch, second Anna McCulley, third Drew Farley and Sophia Morris. Earth and engine, earth and environmental engineering Katie Eller, first place. Second place William Martinez. Third place Trevor Herr. Engineering robotics and computer science, first Ben Brogdon, second Caitlin Blakeman, and third Lee Lofton. In physics astronomy and mathematics, first Austin Pianki and Mason Lalonde. Second Carter Lalonde, third Riley Hitchcock. In health and wellness, first Eily Madge, second Addie Coke and Leslie Pickering, and third Laney Nocteborin. And our overall winners were first place Olivia Hart, second place Jackson Birch, and third place Mason Lalonde and Austin Pianki. So congratulations to them.
See, the science Olympiad competition is this Saturday and I do know by this Friday, everyone who's in it has to get like a prior approval and spend that entire day studying because a lot of it is just testing and testing and a lot of questions, a lot of questions and labs depending on what they do and like decoding and they build models, like massive models. Like it's pretty cool, I gotta say. I have the honor of being in one, one of them. That just, that one is hard. Some people are doing like four or five. They're insane. And FOAP, which is Festivals of Winds and Percussion that the band does, they consent, request to be a part of it and Mr. Mills can send his requests for those students into the organization at Tech. And then when they're accepted, they send in their auditions and scales and sight reading and they get placed. And that is, I do believe, this Friday and Saturday for the honors band. Their performance for the concert is this Saturday. I have quite a few friends going into that one. And let's see. Oh, yes. In mid-state, I never got to announce this, but mid-state, it was out of the entirety of middle Tennessee, all of, all of our performers can go and audition for a placement and there's, there's silver and there's gold band. Let's see. Where Shane Barnes, he got third place gold band, so he's the third best clarinet in middle Tennessee and will be going to audition for all state to see where he places in the state entirely. So that's pretty cool. Richard Simmons, he made fourth chair silver band. Samuel Rose, he got made first place silver band. And Audrey Sap, she made ninth place gold band. They worked really hard for that, like as in all of last year, all of this year. It's been a long time coming.
And then I didn't have this down, but I, it just popped into my head. So we have a clothing closet at the high school, a clothing and hygiene closet that has just been piled up with donations, which is great, but also it's more of like a students work in it type of closet. So we do have school and after-school activities, so a lot of that work gets put off to the side. But during our second block, there were two students, Jackson Henry and Addison Walker, and they spent their time in second block cleaning out the closet and they set up a pop-up store in the library this past week and that was so awesome. And students were coming in and out all day long, grabbing clothes and taking what they needed home. And so that's really awesome and truly just shows the good that we have within our school systems.
Wow. Excellent report. Excellent report. Just a lot of good things. A lot of people doing a lot of, making a lot of accomplishments outside of just the walls of White County High School. So that's, that's great. Any comments for our student representatives?
They represent us very well.
They do, no doubt. No doubt. You, you ladies are setting the bar high. So I just want to bring everyone's attention to something. So Tennessee Department of Education has a student engagement council and the purpose of this council is, it's designed to provide the commissioner of education and the Tennessee Department of Education with inputs from students to support academic achievement, post-secondary, and career readiness across the state. So Ms. Sackett, I understand that you applied for that, an opportunity to be on that council and that you were selected to join that and we would just like to say congratulations for that and for, one, for being willing to go and serve and then, two- district too, to have White County being represented, having a direct voice to the Commissioner of Education. That's a really big deal. One of the things that in reading through this, understand that this council meets from January, meet from January through May of this year, meet once a month, the last Thursday of the month for an hour and they do a virtual meeting. And so have the opportunity to, to provide feedback and interact with other students across the state. This is 11th and 12th grade students from, from each of eight regions in our, in our state. And so we're going to have a representative. So thank you for serving and Mr. D, if you'd like to share some comments on that?
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations and thank you, thank you both for serving on, in this capacity, Ms. McGill as well, but congratulations as well for your, you know, being nominated to this council. This is really exciting and it speaks, says a lot for our students and for our school system and it's exciting for you to represent them, you know? We've had so many folks that are, in our district be recognized at the state level and even national level in recent years. Ms. Sackett is just the latest example of that. You know, Ms. Ryan's been nominated as a Teacher of the Year finalist and a Principal of the Year finalist. As we said earlier, Mr. McDonald is the president of the Tennessee School Awards Association and we have several Teacher of the Year finalists. We've had Supervisor of the Year finalists and there's a lot of great folks coming out of White County and, and as we know, but the state is recognized as well. So you're the latest version of that and congratulations, we're very proud of you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments?
I just want to tell Ms. Sackett how proud I am of her and Ms. McGill for just stepping into this role. I leaned over to Ms. Douglas and said, Ms. Sackett's going to go a long way in her career, whatever she chooses to do. Kudos to her mom and her dad and her, and her family that's here. You've raised a beautiful young lady who is, who is very, very well spoken and very, very well rounded. So congratulations on all your accomplishments.
Thank you.
Anything else? Comments? Well, we do, we do. Congratulations and, and again, congratulations to you both. I really appreciate the effort that you put into this student report. Just to be honest, we wouldn't know, the public wouldn't know if you did not take the time to share that information. There's so much good going on in our district and, you know, it kind of culminates at the high school, so all the work that's taken place here by teachers and staff here at the elementary, all you're doing is you're laying the groundwork and the foundation for these students to be able to excel when they get into that, that high school level. And so just thank everyone. It's, it's a team effort for, for these, achieving these successes. So thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, one other thing, speaking of the legal legislative that we were at with TSB, we had a board of directors meeting this week and some of the legislation that's coming through is wanting to require every school, every school district in the state of Tennessee to have a student board represented. A lot of schools already have it. We are, we can have up to four students on our board. So that gives the districts that have multiple high schools an opportunity to pick from each one of those high schools. We're lucky enough that we only have one. We have two great representatives. This legislation that's coming through says that we can't have two. We can only have one, one representative on our board that can be either from the 11th or the 12th grade. And TSB is opposed to that legislation because they want the LEAs in the local districts to be able to choose if they want to have one, two, three or four members on their board. So be watching for that legislation as it comes through. I don't know exactly what the bill number is, but it's, it's coming and they're going to, they're going to try to push that, that every district has one, but you only be allowed to have one. And I think that would do a disservice to our high schools and our kids to not have the opportunity to serve two years on a, on a board like Ms. Sackett and Ms. McGill.
Appreciate you bringing that to our, our attention. I'm not sure, non-voting representatives on our board, I'm not sure how that impacts, how that impacts that, what kind of conflict that might be, but we are glad you ladies are here and White County has been, I guess, a little bit ahead of the curve on that as well, so having students on our board. And Mr. McDonald, you're the one that championed that a couple of years ago, so thank you for, for doing that. All right. Well, we'll move on to agenda item number 10, that's a public comment per policy 1404. I have agenda item marked for public comment for tonight's meeting. There was no one that signed up to be recognized, so that will move us into our new business item, items of our agenda. So board members, each year we, for classified employees, we give them the opportunity to recoup missed days due to snow. And where we're at right now in the, in our, in our snow period, there is, that would be a maximum of five days that these, that these employees would have the opportunity to make up time missed due to, due to snow. We have to approve that as a board to give them, approve the opportunity for them to make those, that missed time up. So I'd like for us to consider that tonight and so I would entertain a motion that we approve up to the five days as presented for our classified employees. Motion with Mr. McDonald, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fowler. Wasn't sure which one of you it was. So Ms. Fowler, any discussions?
Just one question, Mr. Chairman, the, the five days, what's significant about five? Is it significant?
It's not. It's been tradition. That's what we've done. There's nothing, there has been, there have been years in which the board has gone back. We've missed upwards of 10 or 11 and they've gone back and made adjustments to that number, but that's, that's primarily what we've done.
Okay. So have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion passes. I think you brought up in the deck director's report that threat assessment is in your packet that you can refer to and any questions between now and next meeting, direct that to Mr. D. Coming out of our consent agenda was the Education Freedom Act of 2025. We have, as the law states in section four, as a board, we have to pass a resolution that says that we will abide with and the, and participate in the $2,000 bonus for the teachers as, as part of that, part of that law. So we pulled that out, some members have, had some, some questions on that, so I just opened the, opened the discussion for, for those that have questions on that. The resolution is in your, in your, sample resolution is in your, in your electronic packet, so we can, we can, we can discuss that. If you have anything you'd like to speak to that, Mr. D will give you the opportunity to do that.
I would, Mr. Chairman, thank you. First of all, I'll say that this sample resolution that you have before you came from Tennessee School Boards Association as just that, as an example. They've made it clear that you can add to that or take away as you so see fit. Also want to make the note that this, you were, by signing this portion, you were agreeing to the section of the law that's going to provide the bonuses for teachers. It's not committing yourself to supporting the actual bill of, of the Educational Freedom Act or vouchers as it may be called. And then also want to note that you actually have until June 1st to submit this. So if the board doesn't want to take any action on it tonight, wants to think about it, wants to rewrite some of this, they have that opportunity. Now with that being said, there's a lot of rulemaking that has to go through with the State Board of Education. We asked the question this week, well, if you've got until June 1st to pay it out, it says it's supposed to be paid this year, so how are they going to get that turned around by, by June 30th? That they haven't figured out yet, but I do know you have until June 1st to get this resolution submitted or this portion of the resolution submitted pack and it is supposed to be paid in fiscal year '25, which is by June 30th.
Thank you for that and I think the clarification that we might want to consider is that this is not an issue that we have to, we have to address tonight. So we can, we can take that in consideration and in fact, we could, we could table this till next, next month or until after the rules have come out on this, this bill and make sure that what we're passing says what, what we want it to say. I appreciate TSB for providing us with a starting point, but it's theirs, so. Does anybody have any objections tabling that?
I had one suggestion, which I'm, I'm fine with tabling because I would like to know what the rules really are. I would hate to have something denied and then required to be passed again. But my suggestion is very simple. In the third sentence of the first where asked statement, I'd like to add, I'll read it as I'd like to put it to read, prepare to enter a post-secondary institution, community, United States military or the workforce. I hate that it's something the military is not included in that because a lot of our students in high school go.
Yes, they do and we thank them for their service. So, so yeah, that would be, it'd be things like that because at the end of the day, this is our resolution. It needs to be our resolution. It doesn't need, need to be bowl plate passed on from somebody else. We need to, we need to own it and so, well, let's maybe just, we'll table that until, till next, next time we think it's appropriate to put it on the agenda, but it will be done before June in order to make sure that there are no issues with people not being able to receive their bonus.
I don't like the fact that the governor is forcing us to accept what he pushed through in a special session to give our teachers the money that they deserve. These teachers, all the staff deserve extra money because, I mean, what they have to put up with here on a daily basis, I'm sure is not easy. So I don't like the fact that, that the governor's forcing us to do something like this just because we don't like what he did. I'm all for our teachers having, having this and I want our, I want us to, to be thinking about what we can do for all those pre-K, pre-K teachers, all the staff, all the custodians, whatever we can do to make life a little better for those, those folks that are in the building and in the trenches every day. I think Mr. D said earlier that it's, this is only for K-12 that have students in front of them 50% of the time. So those, those aides and those support staff and administrators, you know, they may not have students in front of them every day for 50% of the time, but they deserve to be recognized. And I just think the governor's done a disservice here in just including just, just the teachers. I think we need to, we need to be thinking about what we can do for our staff as well.
I think that's why we need to table it because there's a lot that's left out.
Mr. D, is it possible to get an approximate amount of what that would be for staff, faculty, others that would not fall into?
Yes, sir. It's, right now, there's been a lot of word of mouth. I've not even seen any actual hard copy of any rules. I mean, it's been told to us about the 50% in front of teachers. I've not seen that in writing, so, but with that in mind, I can start some preliminary numbers to see who would be outside of that box and then what it would take to, to even that up, so the board would have some fiscal, you know, information to go from to make an educated decision.
I think we got some time. I mean, I think we do have a little time. I'm, I'm in favor of tabling this till later day.
Okay. So we'll, we'll table this, but everybody be on notice that we will take it up at, at some point here in the upcoming meeting. All right. So that's all the items on new business. I have nothing for old business that leads us to the last time, next to last item on our agenda and that's chairman's comments. Our next board meeting will be March 20th, 2025 at Northfield Elementary. This moved to the third Thursday of, of the, of the month due to the spring break. So our students and staff will be off spring break on March 10th through the 14th. So that's comments that I have for you. So at this time, I would entertain a motion for a German.
I'm a...
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Um...